All meeting to order. Roll call aldermen.
Isler, Tussaw, Meyer, Hall, Hugh, Anderson, Rodriguez, Arden, Art, Selsky, Amy, Cybert, Martinson, Elmore, Kyle, Here, Musgrove, Arlen.
All aldermen present. Roll call department heads.
Liz Chee, Clay, Archie, Langston, Mike Flynn, Ken Vaughn, Royce Carlisle, Jamie Metrigan, Tim Dragowitz, Jim Schneider, Andrew Spearman, Emily Holt, Chuck Schaper, Al Sable.
Everyone is present. This time, ladies and gentlemen, would you please stand and join me in the closing of this conference.
Let us introduce the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, in this world with the regime of justice.
This time, I will hold with public participation. Please try to keep your comments in two or three minutes. We have a relatively pretty good agenda tonight, so we give everybody a chance. But if anyone would raise their hand, I'll call you one at a time. Come to the microphone, please give your name and address, be in the microphone so we can get it recorded best as possible. And please start now. Your voice speaker, please may ask. Yes, sir.
I'm Rick Brown, 632 South Pennsylvania Avenue, Belleville. I guess you didn't have to call these mayors who put me on the task force for the crime-free housing. I'm gonna be there anyway, and I want to voice my opinion, and hopefully Mr. Consalot will do a little better job than he did with last one, if we have. Keep it open. You need to hear input from all different people, and you need to take the time to listen to some of the input, really hear what's really going on out here. Some of the people that, there's a couple of people that are landlords that are gonna be on, Mr. Vaskey and Mr. Maser. They're familiar with what the actual landlord has to do. You know, understand this, maybe an outcome of this task force is that there may not be a crime-free housing program. There's no landlord wants crime in their housing, just like no neighbors want crime in their neighborhood. And if there's a problem with crime, it's up to the Belleville Police Department to deal with it. Now, like any landlord, we'll help facilitate if there's ever a problem. I don't have that many problems with that, so, you know, that... But just keep in mind, take the input and don't allow yourselves to be given a bunch of information from staff that's gonna try to steer the committee, because that's usually what happens in these special committees. Staff will give you stuff and just try to steer you into whatever that they want. So, keep that in mind. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
2318 South 29th Street, Belleville. This statue that's going out to the park, a $20,000 statue, it looks rather fragile, and if a statue in front of Lindenwood that's under 24-hour video surveillance and police protection in the middle of town is stolen, what is, and this was an $8,000 statue, what's this $20,000 statue? We gonna have to have 24-hour police protection out there, or video cameras? The video cameras didn't do much good at Lindenwood. I just think the park's a bad idea to begin with. It was paying way too much money for it. I suspect either the people that bought the park, I don't like to say this, but either they're stupid or criminal activity about, because I don't think Calhoun paid near that much money from the anglers club. And the sidewalk with the, with the bricks and the concrete, that was a screw-up. Belleville just doesn't seem to, they want the citizens to follow the rules and codes, but Belleville itself doesn't seem to wanna follow. Hey, the codes they themselves passed. And as far as that big hole on Second West Main or wherever it is, Belleville's just gonna have to bite the bullet, pay this guy off, and get the hole taken care of. Hey, Belleville screwed up. They might as well just admit they screwed up. It's gonna cost the taxpayers money like everything else they did. Just pay up, you made a mistake, and own up to it. Jerry Boyer and her Kaskaski Engineering was out there at the park meetings. She's got a conflict of interest. She, her company's doing some of the work out there. And the marathon, we need to do something with that thing. It was supposed to been tearing toward out a long time ago. Twenty-third, the church on West Main, 23rd West Main, isn't any more of an eyesore than many other buildings in town. They're just, Belleville's trying to force that church to condemn it, so the college can buy it real cheap. That's the idea behind that, right here.
Okay, yes, sir.
I'm Mark Peters. I am the Director of Community Health for the County Health Department, and I am actually here to share some good news with the mayor and with the council members. You know, it was about four and a half years ago I stood before this council and thanked you, because the county at that time was looking at some major health issues, and they launched a campaign, a county-wide campaign known as Get Up and Go, really centered around one thing, and that is to try to raise a level of awareness amongst our citizens to take a proactive stance in promoting their own health through two things: active living, healthy eating. The city of Belleville was the first to pass a resolution to come on board with this campaign. I'm happy to say this, since that time, nearly 12 or 13 other mayors have stepped on board with that. Now, we are looking at a county-wide campaign that's gonna impact roughly 217 citizens of this county, that has now gained state recognition, and has become a national model for how communities can collaborate around issues of health. A few months ago, we worked with the city of Belleville and the mayor's staff to work on a grant. This was part of a federal grant that the state of Illinois received. It was called "We Choose Health," was under the Community Transformation Grant. The mayor wrote a letter of support, and I'm very happy to announce, as of today, the Director of the State Health Department, Dr. Hasbrook, had us prepared a board of the county $300,000 in favor of this grant. And really, it is all about how we collaborate for some of the projects that we've been reading about. Parks, recreation, improving the walkability and the pedestrian-friendly aspects of our communities. I'm happy to say this is just the start. This is a one-year grant. What is to follow in subsequent three years is an additional three-quarters of a million dollars, but we have to earn it. We have to continue to work together. So, I definitely wanna say thank you to the mayor. Thank you to the city of Belleville. Thank you for all of your support. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Mark. Thank you for that ad before. I don't know if Mark has to leave or not, but I didn't know he was coming tonight. But we should all be proud, and very proud of Parks and Health Department and all the various individuals who have gotten behind Get Up and Go this weekend. I observed and went out and spoke to the biathlon. And what an outstanding second-year event, right? Second year, Jim? About 200 people participated. These are, these are really pretty outstanding athletes that run five miles and bike 20 miles. But the feedback we got about Belleville going from a handful of fitness activities to over 30 right now, it says a lot about the city's desire to get healthier and to get average people like me out there walking every day. And this is good, and I'm happy to say that we're going in the right direction. We've just gotta keep it up. So, thanks for the partnerships. That's great. Who's next? Who would like, I have a lady right here. Kathy, you wanna be next? You raise your hand, I'll say it my way.
My name is Kathy Draper. I live at 500 South 19th Street, Belleville. I know a lot of people, a lot of the newer aldermen weren't in office when the first park meetings, special meetings came about, about the bicentennial park. But there was other options before the park was actually figured out as a park. When anglers had it, and their building got burned out, and Calhoun took it, there was a 12-foot fence around a pile of rubbish and weeds. We had offers of having Section 8 housing apartments go in there. We had offers of nursing home facility going in there. For safety issues, the nursing home wouldn't have been sufficient because of all the lakes, safety issues and stuff. The park is really the best option, and not only the fact that it would, you know, it's a great asset to the neighborhood, and I live in the neighborhood. We also have a new neighborhood watch, which Mr., which Stewart commented about, the police department. I am on neighborhood watch patrol. I do it three times a day, night, given 24 hours. I'm around the neighborhood all the time. The park is within my neighborhood district of patrolling area. I do it constantly now. I've met neighbors that I didn't know. I've talked to a lot of people. A lot of people are with, on board with us. I understand there's a few of yous that don't wanna do it. But let me tell you two, not only with the health thing, we had the tour to Belleville, that was a great outcome. I worked that, security crossings. It was a great thing. There was over 2,000 people this year drove on the tour to Belleville. This is what Belleville needs. We don't need the big red shoe, okay? I know a lot of people don't like the big red shoe. I'm on board with you. I don't like the big red shoe either, but it wasn't my decision. I think the sculpture's a good idea, and let me tell you two, I went to Lindenwood and talked to the student coordinator, and I talked to Judy Winters with the District 201, District, she's the secretary of the District 201 staffing. They are all on board with this park thing. This would be an asset, not only for the neighborhood, but for the college, for the students. It's within walking distance, bicycle-riding distance. It's not just for the community, not just for the neighborhood. It's for everyone. They tell you on TV, I'm regretting this, they tell you on TV recently, the recent commercials and stuff tell you that you need to push these kids away from the TVs. The larger the kids get by eating, watching TV, they're not getting out, they're not exercising. They're gonna have heart disease, they're gonna die at an early age. These parks are gonna make these kids go out there and learn and educate themselves and be productive citizens. And that's why I'm for the park, and I know a lot of other people are as well. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who's the next lady? Give me the next question. I can see your name.
I'm Carrie Tussaw. I live at 530 South 29th. I live in the neighborhood that connects to the bicentennial park, and I'm also the captain of the Bicentennial Park Association Neighborhood Watch. I started a petition on July 22nd showing support of the park. Right now, I have 430 signatures showing support with the proposed plans to exercise. Right now, our neighborhood is sort of in a transitional stage. More elderly people are moving out, more younger couples with children are moving in. The neighbors with children, including myself, can't wait, of course, to use the nature trails and the fishing and all that goes with it. But there's also a strong number of our elderly neighbors that believe they will greatly benefit from this park as well, because it is in walking distance. We picture old and young enjoying the quietness and serene atmosphere of the nature park, a safe place for runners to take advantage of the numerous trails, and what a great place for Lindenwood students and faculty and the many employees of the crime lab to take a break and get away from the hustle and bustle of the office and classroom. Our neighborhood watch is also involved in the September 8, 9/11 National Day of Service. We will be building housing for a variety of different animals to place in the park. We, as neighbors, have cleaned up a lot of trash back there in the past, and it's only gotten worse with the growing number of bum camps that were appearing. These people bring drugs and crime to our area, and we are tired of it. Leaving the area as it is will just keep drawing a bad element to the area, and we believe the neighborhood would eventually die. This park will be the gem of the surrounding community and will be a magnet to those looking to put down roots in Belleville. And on a final note, in regards to the petitions that a couple of aldermen presented, the petition to abort the park was not signed by one person who lives in our neighborhood. Fifty-six people signed and go forward with the park petition, and over 30 of them live within a five-block radius. So, I do believe that speaks for what the people want. Please don't waver on the city's plans to continue the bicentennial park project, which has already been unanimously approved by the city council in November 2009. Thank you.
Who's next? Anyone? Joyce.
Oh, I can tell you who I am.
Tell us who you are first.
Joyce Johnson, 1516 West Boulevard, Johnson Road. I have two questions. This special task thing, are you gonna go through that, or do we just talk to Ken about that?
We're gonna, once we, once we get it approved tonight, we're going to establish the first meeting, and we'll announce the meeting. So, I'm sure that, you know...
Does the public come in to that meeting?
You know, it's not, it's gonna be, you know, a public committee, so it's not gonna be hidden. So...
So, can you call me since you're...
Yeah, I'm sure it'll be published. I'm sure they'll announce, be glad to announce the first meeting. Our desire is to get a group of people together to try to work through the issues that were raised and try to come to some positive way to possibly move this forward. That's the desire.
Now, I was telling Ken, I've been to a lot of his meetings, right, Ken? I sit on his story, no, I don't. But anyhow, to make a long story short, I was telling Ken that I don't live in Belleville, but my offices, as you know, that Terminator thing that the Combs got has done wonders.
And we worked with them on that. Did she...
And can't they borrow that to get rid of some of this crap?
We have borrowed it. I mean, it's been parked in a couple of our, you know, but that's something that we're working, that's just one aspect.
It's been wonderful on this one street that I have to drive home to.
Okay, thank you, Joyce.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Michael Hagberg, 701 Centerville Ave. First, I'd like to clear up something, or ask for this. Is there a legal conflict of interest where the Kimball Trust is represented by David Gaiman, and the city is represented by Mike Flynn, both working for the same firm?
Not at this point in time. I don't believe there's any dispute between the two parties. And that was originally brought to the attention of the city by my law party. All those discussions were, which are not spring, and I had nothing to do with it.
Yes.
And quite frankly, to this day, I still don't know anything more than what I wrote in this paper.
Okay, thank you. One of the reasons for voting on this and having a special meeting was to make sure we get started, get this completed before the deadline. The original Kimball Trust has no deadline as to when the money has to be used. I FOIA'd that, and I read through it.
Kathy, you wanna respond to that, don't we?
They asked us to give them a deadline. We gave them an initial deadline, and we had to give it to extension right down the deadline, September 15, 2012.
Okay.
And that was, that information was at the request of the trust committee?
Okay. I was saying, I read the trust, and the trust didn't have a deadline, and the deadline came from the December 10, December 23 agreement that you had with the trust. It also states in that agreement that it was extended to December 15, 2012, unless parties agree from time to time to extend the completion date in writing. We could, and we probably should, ask for an extension if we think that this project isn't gonna be done before the 15th. Just, you know, I'm not a lawyer, but my...
Do you hear that comes in?
Contract and field.
Next is, I agree that the wedding gazebo and restrooms are a nice addition to the overall park. I question if placing these buildings within the two-acre Kimball Plaza is in direct opposition to Mr. Kimball's instructions, as so stated in the trust. Quote, "No building shall be erected in the plaza except a minor service building, statuary units, and/or fountains."
Well, let me just say, we went through that, but the trust board reviewed all this, and...
Restroom is in Phase 2.
Restroom, yeah, restroom is in Phase 2 in answer to that question. It's not actually on the Kimball two acres. But they approved all these plans after being reviewed. We were at very much, at their approval of this $400,000, so this has not been willy-nilly figured out.
I'm, you know, again, I'm not a lawyer. I'm just pointing out that I don't believe that the trust manager, the mayor, or anybody has the right to change Mr. Kimball's written instructions associated in the trust, but that's where the legal stuff comes in. Next point, the definition of open space. You're including the parking lot in the definition of open space. Mr. Kimball's requested he have two acres of open space. I mean, why not just dedicate two acres of a Walmart parking lot as Kimball Plaza and call it open space? I think that he meant open space was, you know, open grass to walk on and trails and things like that. So, I mean, at this time, I'm just gonna disagree with the definition that's been used as open space.
You certainly have your way to this point.
And last part, just for the new people that are here, a quick project cost update. We spent $104,000 already. The Metler bid is $845,000. There's another, in next year's budget, a $250,000 new bridge that is being proposed that will have to be paid for, bringing the Kimball project to $1,199,000 at this stage.
Now, that won't just be the Kimball project. That new bridge will give into the whole park for all other phases, and, because the Kimball can be accessed from the 21st Street project site. It will be able to be done at least.
That's right. Saw that for the first time.
So, I mean, you're correct, but you're a little bit, little bit not quite correct, okay?
Yeah. Well, it's like when people state that the whole project's being done with the Kimball grant and the Parks grant.
We never, not stated, we've nev, I, no one to my office or the Parks Department ever stated that there was not match, there was not TIF money. The TIF money's been in the budget the last couple of years for this project.
Did you write the letter to the editor that published in the paper?
And the editor, what, 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 what word were you looking at here?
The, in the paper, the write-up that was under the opinion section only mentioned the grant and the Kimball and the Parks grant. I'm sorry, but it didn't mention the TIF money that was coming out.
Well, we've had, we've had article after article, it's documented, and we've had, and I'll have to go back and look at my written article I submitted and what, because sometimes what's actually written in the paper is slightly sometimes changed, to meet their space.
I agree.
But I can tell you, we never hit at all that the budget stated very clearly that there was a match to the one grant, and that there also was TIF money to be used. That's been very clear for the last several years, at numerous meetings.
No, I don't doubt it, it's just what I saw in the paper.
Now, be careful what you read in the paper.
I agree. So, just as you know, as TIF 3 and 16 will be $706,000 for this phase of the project. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time. Anyone else? Anyone else like to speak this evening? Yes, ma'am?
I'm from New Mars TV Race Bar and Grill, 9735 West Main Street. I'd like to speak on the resolution 3111, which is a binding referendum, which I thought was supposed to be a non-binding referendum for the video gaming in the November election. We really would like to have it voted to go ahead and have that on the November election. It's very important that we get it on the November election, so that the people can vote, considering all the talk we've had about parks and everything like that. Economy's tough. Where's the cuts gonna come from if the economy really gets tough? The police department or some other department? Belleville does need this money, and we need the support of Belleville and all the aldermen for the businesses here that have been supporting Belleville all these years.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak this evening? Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name's Rob Jelz. I'm the owner of Proprietary South, at the street at 6.4 South 100th Street. I've been attending the last couple of meetings, and there has been concerns about what the gaming's going to do to the community. Well, I'd just like to bring you to attention that myself, along with all the other tavern owners, are also have investments in the community. Along with that, we look at every option with our, anything we change on our menus, anything that we may do different, we have to look at that option, because we depend on our regular customers and our community to support our business and our livelihood. Along with that, we look at this also as a concern, or a pro, you know, pros and cons. And with all, I've had eight years' experience, and I'm just a fraction of some of my colleagues here, and along with that, we felt that we, that this is a positive thing, not only for us, but for the community. And we would like to hope that the city of Belleville allows us to, give us the opportunity to put it to the vote and hopefully bring it to the next ballot, and see what we could, you know, if it is, works out to be as whole, as good as we hope. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak? Yes, sir, back.
Mike Saylor, Rochelle, Marne, Mayberry, 7400, Questing. We represent quite a few of these tavern federated hospitality industry, and their rates are based on their revenue, their receipts for the year. And I just wanna tell you that all of them are down. They really, really need to have this game put on the ballot, and I think it's good for them, and it's good for the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Anyone else tonight? Yes, sir.
My name is Patrick Shannon. I'm actually speaking on behalf of A. Smith, who's Belleville resident. He undergoing a fairly difficult root canal, wasn't able to make it tonight. But he had asked me to bring in his 37 letters from Belleville residents and another 52 that signed a petition that says almost what the letters say. I'd like to read this if I could, please. Says, "Dear Mayor and Alderman, please conduct the referendum about video gaming at the earliest possible opportunity. The industry has already begun rolling out around the state. The Illinois Gaming Board Central System was declared live on Thursday, August 19, and video gaming terminals are already being installed in licensed locations in selected cities. Neighborhood communities will be offering video games in the coming months. The residents of Belleville desire their voices to be heard and supported or in opposition to video gaming, and eligible Belleville businesses and nonprofits deserve a resolution on this issue at the earliest possible opportunity, so they can plan for their future. Thank you for taking the time, thank you for taking this issue seriously and including the video gaming referendum on the upcoming November ballot. Timely resolution of this issue will benefit the entire community." And can I leave these in your decision?
You're a speaker to the city clerk, please.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else tonight would like to speak?
Ma'am, I'm sorry, I forgot to submit the 430.
Would you give it to Carrie, please? Okay, last one, anybody else? Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, Alderman. My name's Barry Gregory. We're the owner of Crete Hands Irish Pub and Banquet Center, 5500 North Belt West, along with my wife, Patty Gregory. I wanna, I'd love for you guys, our, the board, to vote on this tonight and say, hey, let's move forward with video gaming. We're already behind the ball, and we can't submit applications to the Illinois Gaming Board until it is approved here within the city. We all know that probably next month, these games are gonna be rolling within a mile over city limits at probably six locations. So, we're already behind the ball, so please, if you decide to put it, to vote in the public, please make it in November. I would really appreciate it. We need it for our businesses, we need it for our business plans, so anything you can do to help us would be greatly appreciated. And Alderman, I'd like to thank you for changing your position on gaming here in Illinois, for supporting gaming now.
Why did you change?
Well, I received this note about your fundraiser, and it says, 50/50 draft, well, 50/50 raffle is.
You're right.
So, I appreciate it, and I would welcome your looking. But you're holding a raffle, then.
Yeah, you have a permit for it.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay. Anybody else tonight? Yes, sir.
My name's John Brisk. I own Tim Joe's, 6500 West Main, and...
I own Tim and Joe's, 6500 West Main, and Cutters, 239 Carlisle Avenue. I was hoping it wouldn't come to this. I was hoping it could just be voted on by all the aldermen, but I accepted that they want to let the people vote. So, I'm asking you to put it on the November election. One other thing, this whole, how can I have 50/50 raffle? Now, you're doing it, but I can't, right? Well, you're having one, right?
Can I apply?
Okay, because it's legal, right? Well, then, why can't we have gambling?
Do you really want to come here a one night?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Back to, back to the business at hand. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak tonight? Hearing that, I'm closing public participation, and we'll move on to the regular meeting. And I thank you all for keeping it nice and good. As we go to presentations, recognitions, and appointments, I'd like to start off by saying, I want to recognize that the character word of the month is caring. And caring meaning being compassionate and showing others you care. And certainly, this day and age, you don't have it on best. So, I would ask everyone to continue. Many of our schools and many of our businesses, put the caring, the character words on the, on the marquees throughout the month. And I ask that you continue and always give them a serious thought. The next thing at this time, I'd ask, like to ask Deb Belleville on her presentation to come forward and talk about this fabulous opportunity we have with the Southside Park and the Mission Continues project on August 18th. Deb?
Hi, I am Debbie Belleville. I'm the manager of Parks Migration. And again, I'm a little compassionate with the parks and the improvement of parks, and I love those flyers that said, "Step up to the plate on the table." This is a great opportunity that came to us, and the Missions Continues group that came and asked us if we had a project that we would consider to have volunteers improve the park. We selected Southside Park, and it is a park that we have tried a few times to get some grants, and we have failed. So, this is an opportunity on August 18th to roll up your sleeves, help out. There is an email, website address, missionscontinues.org to register. We currently have 300 volunteers at this time. Some of them are veterans, some of them are just civilians, and we take any abilities. They said, "Any ages, any abilities, we'll find jobs for you." We are doing projects such as painting, staining, building, the horseshoe pit, rip wrapping. We have 100 athletic football players coming from Lenderwood High School, Lenderwood University. We are doing some block walls. We are taking down fencing. So, we have all kinds, and then it's just a four-hour service project. So, it's from 8:30 to 12:30. We do ask if you register ahead of time. They have T-shirts for everyone. Otherwise, you can register when you get there. And then we are providing lunch. It will be between Southside Improvement that is providing lunch, and then also we have four parties that are providing lunch for us. So, we would like everybody's participation. Come out and join us.
Save the website a little time.
It's missionscontinues.org. It is on that flyer, and or feel free to call me at Parks and Recreation Department. I'll make sure you get registered.
It's been exciting recently. If you're listening to Cardinal Games, they've been advertising in Fox Sports, and it's just great to hear them talk about the city of Belleville. You know, we have a history for pulling off events like this very successfully. Our Painted Town was a prime example of how we could bring large numbers of volunteers for positive things. So, I'm very proud of the Parks Department. I'm extremely proud of the volunteers who've already signed up, and I hope many of you will tell others to join us on August 18th and make this worthwhile project. Southside Park's truly one of our oldest parks. It's one of our most inner-city parks. We've been trying for years to get some large grants, but we haven't been able to land large grants. This is a big, this is a big deal to help us with a lot of labor on one given Saturday. So, this is exciting. Deb, thank you. The next thing I want to also talk about is the present vote on the first annual Belleville Helping Belleville Day set for September 8, 2012. Who's going to talk about that? Ms. Emily?
Hi, your name is Emily Colson, Director of Development and Planning, 46. I want to talk to you a few minutes tonight about the first annual Belleville Helping Belleville Service Day that's been set for Saturday, September 8th. This is part of the Greater Belleville Neighborhood Partnership Program. Right now, we've got four projects going in three different zones. In Zone A, we've got a cleanup that's been designed to help cut some low-hanging branches and things around paths that students take to school. So, it's going to be encouraging walking and cleaning up the area, making it better for kids to use to get to school. In Zone H, there are actually two part, two projects planned, planned, as Carrie Lou too, with the Bicycles Neighborhood Association, they're planning on building butterfly houses and birdhouses and things like that each year. The Lenderwood Neighbors Association has also planned, I think we cleaned up a block already for that evening. And Zone E has planned, a general zone we'll clean up as well. I'm not sure where this is going to be focused right now, maybe along Main Street or looking at you. I think we know that. And then later in the day, that will take place in the morning, later in the day at 3 o'clock that afternoon, we're going to have entertainment, food, and festivities and activities for families at Belleville East High School in the Commons area there. So, just to honor those who serve our community every day, the firemen, the police officers, the men and women who are in the military, as well as to honor those who have self-served, who have helped serve during this day of service. So, if you have questions, you can contact me. If you're actively volunteering, you can contact Peggy in the Human Resources Department. There was an article about this in the webpage, or on the newsletter, I'm sorry. So, any questions you have, we have the answer.
Thanks, Emily. And this is another outstanding event that's coming out of the Whole New Neighborhood Partnership. And there's a lot of hands that are in this. I want to thank the staff, people who've really taken the leadership to really direct this and get it going. But there's a lot of volunteers already stepping up, and those are the kind of things that make our city stand out from so many other cities. We have a lot of caring citizens, and we have an awful lot of good that's going on in this community. And I, these are the kind of things that really make you proud of being part of it. So, thank you to all of you, and I encourage all of you here, maybe some of the, and I know they get tapped a lot, but maybe some of our business owners will also find a way to pitch in with some of this recognition and think of ways that we can get some other support and some other possible collaboration. So, thank you, Emily, for that. At this time, I would like to ask for a motion to approve my sheet here that I passed out outlining the special task force for the proposed housing, crime-free housing apartments. The members that's following are Alderman Ken Concilla, who will serve as the chairperson, Stan Brezky, Kevin Bowles, Alderman Dean Hart, Linda Hablin, John Mazur, is it Mazu?
Mazur.
Dan Holman, and Tracy Tialdo. Tricia, I'm sorry. And understanding that Chief Clay, Bob Sable, Director of Housing, and Police Lieutenant Matt Heiskamp will serve as staff resources. Do I hear a motion to approve that?
Summon.
Motion by Alderman Meyer, second by Alderman Heisler. Any discussion?
I just have one quick question. I'd asked the last meeting about legal counsel being on this committee, which you said you were making an attempt to have a lawyer or something.
Well, Mike and I have really gone into it, but we'll, as they get going, certainly, anything they come up with is going to have to be reviewed by the legal department, and will be so. I dislike the drafts that they've had thus far, as you remember, at times didn't, at times where you'd ask me about them, and I'd say they were in the hands of the, to retrieve at that time, the police chief and the city attorney. Whether they're at every meeting, they will be a part of this, is the best I can tell you. Okay? I don't know that they need to sit there through the dialogue and discussion, but anything that's brought forward by the group to be reviewed will go to this gentleman, and either him or his designated will look at it. Who is next? Anyone? Does that answer the question?
I have a question. It's frustrating that only members of your party would support you guys.
Mr. Alderman Concilla has been chairman of Housing, where a lot of this has come from, and they've had many meetings, so I felt that he has been involved, and it was appropriate. But there's another independent Alderman on the committee. And I also think, you know, with years of experience comes chairman chairs. So, that's all I can say. It's a, that's, you know, your comments duly noted, but my appointments duly stated. So, I ask, we have a motion, and we have a second. Do we hear any other discussion? Hearing that, I call for a roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Concilla.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Holt. Anderson.
Aye.
Reddewitts.
Aye.
Harpinder.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Silstein.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
Martinson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Arland.
Motion carries. At this time, we're having a meeting in the minutes of the regular meeting, the minutes of the regular meeting, City Council, July 16, 2012. What's your pleasure?
Your Honor, I have a correction to make.
Can we make the motion first, too, then we'll make the correction?
Okay.
So, we have a motion to accept the minutes, and we have a second.
Second.
We have a second, Alderman Heisler, and if your correction is?
Yes, I have a correction. It's on page five, the second last paragraph, and it says, well, basically, that second last paragraph is wrong. That statement was made, I believe, by a different person, but it was not Ms. Foltz. By reviewing the recording, her exact statement was basically, "On a unanimous vote by the zoning board, we'll prepare the arguments in accordance," I'm sorry, "in advance of the city council meeting. If there's ever a split vote, even one or two members voting differently than the majority of the zoning board, then we don't prepare the arguments." That is what she actually said. I'd like that changed, please.
Duly noted. Mr. Heisler, do you accept that?
Yes.
Is there any other comments or questions about tonight's minutes? Hearing that, all in favor of accepting the minutes, but that correction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We go to claims, pay, or dispersments. What's your pleasure?
Yes, Your Honor, they have claims, pay, or dispersments.
Motion by Alderman Anderson, second by Alderman Harpinder. Any discussion about the handling of the business? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Concilla.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Holt.
Anderson.
Aye.
Reddewitts.
Aye.
Harpinder.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Silstein.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
Martinson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Arland.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Silstein.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
Martinson.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries. Zoning Board Appeals, requires recourse.
What's the group's rathers in terms of one by one or as a group or part of?
Anybody opposed or we read them as a group? Is there any action tonight? Or reading individual? Let's go.
Case 42, July 12th. Order of Smolensberger, Master Real Estate Service, requesting a use variance in order to utilize 1801 North Belt East as a real estate office on first floor and reside in and lease the two apartments on the second floor. The recommendation was the zoning board to a unanimous vote for approval.
Do I hear a motion? Motion to approve and have the proper arguments drawn. Do I hear a second? I'm sorry, second was by Joe?
Yes.
Second by Alderman Harpinder. Do I hear any discussion? All in favor of approving case number 42 and have the proper arguments drawn, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Case 43, Jerry Boyer, Kaskaski Engineering Group, requesting a sign installation permit in the area of special control. The zoning board recommended a unanimous vote.
Nobody can buy a proper argument.
Motion by Alderman Cybert, second by Alderman Martinson, to approve case number 43. Any discussion? Yes, ma'am?
In both cases, two and case seven, I don't want to get the idea this is written in way. It's just frustrating that the work is done before it's actually voted on.
Well, I think there's a process. Emily, you want to go ahead and explain the process?
I can address it. Temporary sign permits were granted, I believe, for both of these. I know for sure for case 43, we issued a temporary sign permit for that. So, wouldn't it be approved for some reason?
They understand that, but we had no, we had no opposition in the zoning board meeting.
Right. And that's a common practice for businesses downtown, because it does take so long for signs to get approved, it's for us to grant a temporary permit and intro.
Okay, and I want to make it clear, I'm not objecting, I just was wondering about the process.
And we've done this over the years, for a number of years now, trying to be more business-friendly, because that's been a comment many years, and we've listened. So, they understand. There could be something that comes up that's earth-shattering different than what happened to zoning board, but we don't feel there's a problem with these. It's a typical haunting like everyone else had downtown, it's been approved case after case after case. And so, we didn't feel that issuing a temporary was a risky business at all. We have a motion, and we have a second, to approve case number 43 and have the proper arguments drawn. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Case 44, the agreement requesting a use variance in order to operate a daycare for up to eight children at 112 Cameron Drive, and the zoning board can recommend a denial unanimously.
Motion to deny. Motion by Alderman Elmore to deny case number 45. Do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Schneider. Any discussion further?
I thought she had changed her request for only three. Do, what was?
She never actually withdrew her request to have a daycare for eight children. She is allowed to have three under the zoning code. She gives a home occupation permit. We have not seen one yet, so she has a larger case.
And her case filed is for eight, and she's not withdrawing.
The paperwork never got changed.
Right. So, we are therefore moving forward, acting on her original case. We have a motion and a second to deny case number 44. Any other discussion? All in favor of denying case number 44, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries to deny.
Case 45, Nancy Schulte, local license, requesting a sign installation permit for area special control. The recommendation was approved.
Will we comply with the recommendation of the zoning board and proper arguments drawn?
Motion by Alderman Cybert, second by Alderman Martinson, to approve case number 46 and have the proper arguments drawn. Any additions or corrections? All in favor of this motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Case 47, Greg Crocker, requesting a special use permit in order to place three apartments on 301 East Main Street. The recommendation was approved.
Please comply with the recommendation of the zoning board and proper arguments drawn.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Concilla. Do I hear any discussion? Yes, ma'am?
Remind me what the discussion was about parking for these.
He said he was talking with someone who owns a lot nearby. It's not actually required to have parking for the sign code.
Does the city own a lot behind?
We do own a lot behind. He did say at the meeting that the condo he had on South High Street, he had talked with the local, the person who owned the lot, he had to secure those spaces for the tenants there. He's interested in doing the same thing for this building. That's something that he's working on. Um, he did say at the meeting that, um, the condo he had on South High Street, um, he had talked with the local, the person who owned the lot, he had to secure those spaces for the tenants there. Um, he's interested in doing the same thing for this building, that's something that he's working on. So, there's no such.
But it's not against any of our ordinances if he has power?
Right.
Is this, uh, ground floor of these blocks in downtown, this commercial property?
I'm sorry, what was that?
The apartments. Are they on the second floor, or are they ground?
Yes, the building is being renovated, it's the old Hettie's building at three oh one East Main, and those apart, those apartments are condos, they're going to be on the second floor of that building.
First floors will be the tavern, Hot Scott's Tavern, I mean.
Is all of the entrances to be on the side street or on the main street?
Two, um, I think two entrances are on North Church, one entrances is on, um, Main Street.
We have a motion and we have a second to approve, uh, case number forty-seven and the proper arguments drawn. Any other questions? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Case forty-eight. Mark Hot Scott requesting a sign installation permit for an area of special control. Recommendation was approved.
I'm going to comply with the recommendation of the zoning board and have proper arguments drawn.
Motion by Alderman Meyer, second by Alderman Holt, to approve case number forty-eight and have the proper arguments drawn. Any discussion? All in favor of approving case number forty-eight, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Forty-nine. Mark Hot Scott requesting a special use permit for a liquor license at three oh one East Main Street. The recommendation was approved.
I'm going to comply with the recommendation of the zoning board and have proper arguments drawn.
Motion by Alderman Meyer, second by Alderman Holt, to approve case number forty-nine and have the proper arguments drawn. Any discussion? All in favor of this motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. City Attorney's Report dated July twenty-fifth, two thousand twelve. What's your pleasure? Motion to approve and accept, we have a second, second by, motion was Alderman Silstein, second by Alderman Meyer, to approve the City Attorney's Report dated July twenty-fifth. Any discussion?
I just have a question, Mr. Foltz. Um, some of these I know are done, like, I know already for a second.
What are you talking about?
I, I, the dates, there's no date on any of these, so I don't know.
What are you talking about? Which, which, which cases?
Just any of them. Well, I'm, I'm.
Well, some of them are identified by name, but you're talking about the demolition cases that are listed by Edra?
Right.
Oh. Some of those are, would you say done, really demolished?
Correct.
Yes, some of them were demolished, and those are cases where they filed the demolition name, uh, the scene, the board code of the demolition name.
Okay, that's what I didn't understand.
So, it's a two-part process.
Okay, that's the part I didn't understand, but it was already down, why was it still a case?
Because if we don't convince the demolition, we'll leave, we're leaving the property, we will eventually could take the property.
Okay, okay.
Or they might surrender the property.
Okay, um, and is not the city still involved with the one regarding the corner of Jackson and Main, is this an update?
I don't have that one in my desk. The answer is, we are still involved with our attorney, uh, Julie Brook, who is, uh, represents, uh, represents the city from our insurance carrier. Because we were sued in that case, and it could be a liability to the city, our insurance carrier provides legal counsel.
Right, okay.
And I, and I think some of you had requested, and I forwarded some things last week, an update from her, so, I don't remember how, uh, but it is that was the request, and I did hear that.
That's correct.
Right, I think, I couldn't remember who, I did some of the requests. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve the City Attorney's Report. Any other discussion? All in favor of accepting this and have it filed, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Oral reports, substanding committees, the first one is Alderman Seibert.
Yes, Your Honor, uh, I have a motion to approve below, a motion to confirm to the bill for the Kimball, has a Metler Development, eight hundred and forty-five thousand, eighty three thousand, total.
Motion by Alderman, motion by Alderman Seibert, second by Alderman Silstein. Discussion, anyone? Yes, Mr. Henson?
Yes, uh, a few things I want to, uh, note. First of all, with the public, the petitions that were collected on June twenty-eighth have been filed with the, uh, City Clerk's Office, they were filed last week. I have, uh, also submitted to the City Clerk this evening and asked that they, uh, be filed with the, uh, minutes this evening, a multitude of questions and answers in relation to this project and the Kimball Trust, uh, to speed things up. I'm asking that these, uh, questions and answers be filed with the minutes.
What did you send to me that the staff and I answered?
Correct.
So that we'll add that to the record?
And I want to thank Ms. Valvo for her, uh, prompt and, and, uh, quick response. Um, I do have one question, and then I will have a, a comment. In relation to the Kimball Trust gift, how, and this was a question that was raised to me, how did we go about buying the sculpture without it going through the City Council, and perhaps maybe the City Attorney needs to answer this question, when somebody gives a gift or money to the city becomes a colored money, and usually it goes through in some form of a process? And that's the question that was raised to me, and I cannot answer that question.
The council approved the Kimball project and plan expenditure. Um, the sculpture became a topic and desired by the park staff, identified early on as something they desired. They worked with the Art of Square Committee, Patty Gregory, et cetera, during the art show, correct? And, and this was locked in. The money was there, uh, it was approved, the project was approved, the, the, the trust people approved it, the council approved the project, and, and I guess it was just felt that we didn't, um, you know, we weren't doing anything outside, the staff made the request, and, and we felt that it was, we had a chance to secure this, which was a piece of, uh, a piece of the project that they wanted to secure. Um, you know, it's just no different than, we had to start somewhere with the engineering of the project. We had to do the engineering before we could get the thing going, so we had engineering costs, that's part of getting something started.
But the engineering was approved by the City Council?
And, and the project was approved by the City Council, I mean, uh, I don't know, Debbie or Jim, did we?
We actually had a Kimball plan budget, and the engineering and sculpture that we had put in, twenty thousand for sculpture, so we were looking for our piece that was in that name. This piece had actually valued at twenty-eight to thirty thousand dollars, and we went through Kimball plan, we went through Arden Square with Patty Gregory to get a good price, and also to get those ones, so it started for the Arden Square.
I'm just asking, I, I think, I, I believe money that is given to the city, no matter how it becomes to the city, it's city money, and, and it's the role of this body to, to approve those expenditures, that's just my point here. I also entered, uh, Your Honor, into the record, uh, a statement, which I, uh, wanted as part of the minutes, but I am going to, uh, to read. Fellow City Council members, mayor, city clerk, city treasurer, citizens. This evening we have an important question before us, and is more than voting for spending of funds for Biocentennial Park. There are questions as to how we do business as a city, and I hope for the last few weeks we have learned from some mistakes. While the gift and grant from the Kimball Fund is nice, when calls for additional public funds to be expended is no longer a gift, but a public agreement, that in turn is a public question that could be open to debate, ridicule, or even public acceptance. I want to state that we as a city must do better in our communication efforts, for failed communication leads to mistrust by the public. The prime example is the way communication or lack thereof is dispensed on this project. Now, the divisive issue is apparent among the public, the administration must dedicate itself to better communication. That could have started by informing all the new members of the City Council of all the plans, previous documentations, as it relates to the project, and providing all members with renderings of the park project, and to give us a conceptual view. To say we had the information and you never asked for it is purely unacceptable to me. As relates to public expenditures, we need a greater effort to explain to the city the goals as it balances what the public provides as basic needs, such as police protection, expected needs such as proper roads, and quality of life issues such as a new park. I want to say, I hear the people that are worried about crime. I want to say that I hear the people that they say my road is not drivable, and questions such as expense for a park. I hear the people that say we paid too much money for this park. I hear the Alderman that had asked why it did not go before the findings committee, and I myself question why it did not go before the findings committee. This is a major obligation, all protocols should have been filed. I certainly hear the people that reside in Tiff three, and see the transfer of funds from Tiff number three to Tiff number sixteen as a possible misuse, abuse, or co-mingle in public funds that they are providing out of their property taxes. I have listened to phone calls, I have talked with people in person, read numerous, numerous emails, and even held a town hall public informational meeting, had the park site to gather public input. Response citywide was basically fifty-fifty. Response work-wise was basically fifty-fifty. Do either abort or place the park on hold, fifty-fifty, proceed with the parks as presented tonight. At a minimum, I must tell, at minimum, that must tell the City Council that future phases need more public dialogue, better budgeting, and review the basic essential needs of this crime control and maintenance of streets, curbs, and sidewalks as we try to enhance this park. However, I cannot go without saying that fifty percent of residents that are from this project primarily live, that are for this project, primarily live in close proximity by the ZCN and park. And even though this area by two thousand thirteen will no longer reside more than five, I and Alderman Silstein are still the representatives. The main purpose for this public meeting on July twenty-eighth, two thousand thirteen was to get those neighborhoods of the park's opinion. I'm glad I did this for a change to tie the public input as it was presented to me and whatever I received. I can see where some, whoever's patients at the park provide all the promise that they hope for, I can see where some will say we will not raise property values or even build empty houses. Property values will only go up as the city diminishes its crimes, improves its infrastructure, and works with all landowners and potential landowners with the means to fix their property, and one such avenue is to ensure that all taxes on the public are in check. From there, we need to look at programs to help the people in tough situations, where it's hard sometimes to choose between painting the house or feeding your children. Yet, if you attended the public meeting on July twenty-eighth, you could not become touched by the hope the neighborhood sees in the park project, and that ripple hope should be recognized by all. I asked the people in the area, would you rather have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to go towards your roads and streets or the park? It was very clear, Your Honor, they stated they wanted the park, and the funds are for that area and that ward, and I feel should stay in that area. I asked the people to hear them. I asked the City Council to hear them. I do so with the reminder that if we move forward with the expenditure, strong public scrutiny will still continue to be placed on how this money is spent. I ask that all public permits be obtained, and any further such expenditures that we plan to prioritize together for better. In addition, I ask that all the dumpings of any source be cleaned up, for such decoration of property should cease and the leach and grass should be trimmed. This is a park, Your Honor, and we need to treat it as that way. Allow and run up is not only possibly illegal, but also simply not proper. I am certain, Mayor, that the votes are here for passage, therefore, an attempt to block the plan is futile, and I want to make it clear to anyone that that was never my attempt. I want to make an informed decision. Thus, I'm asking the City Council as a whole to consider supporting this project as presented, and that we will all come together, united, deciding, and be cooperative in an effort to make this project the best we can for Valvo, and focus our discontent on making sure such dilemmas do not arise in the future, for we cannot continue to divide the city. Mayor, gifts which spring on taxpayer expenses must be viewed as public endeavor, removing funds, the tip-to-tip needs to stop while we build parks. We must better analyze how to keep them crime-free, maintain, or if we move services from one burden to another, we are just relocating the problem. All taxpayers that have had taxpayer expenses suffered, for we lack the funds provided by the public service.
Isn't his three minutes up? Sir, I'm sorry, I'm leaving. I just need it no more, thank you.
Last, the timeframe for completion in, in the end is, is at the end of this year, and, uh, we've, we've ran one extension. Mayor, it's not in your hands. This project must happen and must happen in proper form, and any gain, I do want to urge all my colleagues here, I know there's been some discontent, but I believe that we need to move forward with this with a united, uh, front for the people that live in that area, and I hope even those that have maybe voted against it, and they, uh, consider, uh, voting in favor tonight. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
I have to agree with, I think part of what Alderman said, it's very frustrating, there have been both communication and protocol issues on this. I also want to say, though, to the members of the Parks Department and the Park Board that I appreciate them taking the time this week to, um, clue us in on what some of us missed, because we have not been part of the whole process. I am very disturbed, though, and would like to hear, what is the real story on the deadline? If it was not imposed by the Kimballs, if it wasn't our own deadline, we've got another artificial crisis here, forcing us to make a decision that's not really, uh, there's no time to straighten, we're the ones who made the rules.
No, we agreed with the trust board with this deadline. They granted us one extension already, when we got into lengthy studies of the watershed, et cetera.
That's absolutely not the way it was presented. I totally thought it came to part of the map. To now find out at the ninth hour here that this was.
No, you, no, it was, no, it's, okay, okay, make your case, I'm, I'm.
I, I have never seen the agreement.
We gave copies of the agreement to the trust.
The Kimball Trust?
Well, several of you asked for, you know, and, and you were at the meeting, did you not have a present during the day?
I handed.
I mean, you got Joe, you called Nassmeyer, right? And, and somebody else did, we, we've not hidden it, I mean, I just, you know, if, if we could have, you know, I guess we could email it to everybody, we could copy it for everybody, but, you know, a lot of people, you know, this has been going on for years.
I understand, but I also think that we recognize the economy has changed since we started this project.
Well, this was going on during the budget process this year, and these questions were raised, I can do that.
There was no narrative, no.
Yeah, well, if, was, when you got the sheet from Jamie about Tiff three, Jamie, was it not in there about using money transferring, transferring to Tiff sixteen for the park?
Tiff three and sales tech said all the projects were broken.
They were all broken down and listed, and there was not a question. I repeat, not a question. And it was, we had numerous meetings on the budget, and that was both in two thousand ten, eleven, and twelve, Kimball was mentioned in the budget, am I correct?
At least I know eleven and twelve.
Well, I think it started in ten, because I think that's the first time we put some money in there. So, this is not going to be secret. You know, so, I mean, I, I'm listening, I'm respectful, I, I recognize and I respect your comments, but we can debate this all night, I can tell you to, to the audience, this has not been hidden, it's not been a secret. The whole timeline here of many, many votes, and most every one of them, Debbie, weren't they unanimous on the council floor?
Every single one.
Every single one.
I've got twenty-five percent of the council is due within the past year. But one, one other point, I am very frustrated about what came out at the meeting at five about the permits not being issued yet.
The permit, as I retold you, Jerry Boyer was asked the question, and Tim Gregory were both still here. We are waiting, and we believe for the next day or so, we will get the permit from IDNR. The man was on vacation last week. The state of Illinois is greatly short of staff in almost every department. We know we can't start, but we also know that Mr. Metler, who approved here tonight, has about two weeks of due diligence to get his bonds, to get with our unions, and sign the project labor agreements, and get all his ducks in a row, so that we can start and meet this agreed-upon deadline of December fifteenth. Isn't that the correct deadline?
Okay, but if, if we requested this permit last November.
This is not uncommon, but we were told in many conversations and emails that Jerry Boyer and, and, uh, our engineer have had with IDNR, that they are down to the final questions, have been all resolved, and they believe that this is going to be coming in a mat, we thought we'd have it last Friday. We really did, but we found out the man was on vacation. So, uh, I had every reason to believe. Now, Metler can't start until we have the IDNR permit, we're not, that's not, that's not a lie to anybody, that's the fact. But we believe it's here, and we believe we need to approve the contract tonight. Mr. Metler knows that that's a contingency, even if we approve this tonight, if that goes south, he knows that he can't get started until then, right, Tim? That, you know, so there's, there's nothing, there's nothing secretive or unusual about the way we're doing business. We're trying to be timely and get some things done. We have a park that people are anxious to use, there's lakes, there's, there's things We have a park that people are anxious to use, there's lakes, there's things out there, and we're trying to move this project forward. This has been in the budget for a couple of years, trying to get this forward. So, you know, I don't have else to say, but I think we answered everything in committee
Sillsby.
Aye.
of our here.
Hayden. Cybert.
Anybody else, anything new?
Aye.
Martinson.
Yes, sir?
Aye.
Uh, Mayor, Council, I learned since I've been elected that our city for the population
Almore.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Harland.
Motion carries, Alderman and Cybert.
is, I don't know how to say this, where you don't have enough park space compared to
Yes, sir. Final, motion to approve up to $125,000 for brick sidewalks, ordered pending to the
the national average, so I support this, and I support any future attempts to get
Portland Street Council.
any property outside the city outskirts, basically, in one corporate area compared
So, we'll...
Motion, Alderman and Cybert, second by Alderman Martinson, discussion.
to...
Yes, ma'am. Any other questions, we vote? Alderman Cybert, Schneider.
Um, I think a lot of this could have been avoided if things was done right.
Roll call.
Highsler.
Aye.
Concella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Holt.
Anderson.
Aye.
We knew we were in a historical district, and as I stated in the Streets and Graves
Rudowitz.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
meeting, I asked to see the minutes from the public hearing, and there are none, or
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
Martinson.
Aye.
Almore.
Aye.
Schneider. No. Musgrove.
they could not find them.
Aye.
Harland.
I think from here on out, any public hearing, there needs to be minutes kept, so we know...
Well, we have a, it passes, and I believe it was 13 to 2 to 1 present. I agree with you, I agree with you, Alderman and Schneider, and that was mistaken. Is that correct, Mrs. Fields? So, that is the due count, 13 votes for our, 2 against, and 1 present. But you stated in your article and editorial the other day that you didn't know, and you Uh, we move on to the next item, Mr. Cybert. were the first person to sign the sign-in sheet at the open house, the public forum,
Yes, sir. Motion to approve the low veteran right wage in the amount of $254,668 for street
that I was also at, and I failed to sign it that night, but I was there. So, you said that you didn't know about it, but there was a public meeting that was held...
improvement since 21st Street.
You said there were more numerous public meetings.
So, we'll...
Motion, Cybert, and second by Alderman Concella, do I hear any discussion about Yes, there was, yes, there was.
Okay, when were they?
Streets and Graves, we talked about it, we talked about it in Main Street, we talked the 21st Street project? about it in numerous places. Roll call.
Highsler.
But when, what are the dates?
Aye.
Concella.
Aye.
I don't have the dates here, and I won't disagree with you, we can do better with
Meyer.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Rudowitz.
Aye.
minutes at public meetings, we can do better, we can always make improvements on things.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
But once again, I'm going to tell you, we made it clear that we had a limited budget, we made it clear that we didn't believe we had the money to do the brick sidewalks. Yes, we know that there's an old arness that we're going to have to look at, you're not wrong, uh, but I will tell you, we made it clear, and I not approved the project, right, Mr. Gregwitz? This was, once again, not a secret, it was not, we were just trying to get bubble up streets that had three and four inches in places of raised concrete for tripping falls, where we do get drug into lawsuits all the time, and the city has to pay. So, to protect the taxpayers, we decided to try to get this phase of the coupler done first. It was the most dangerous. And there was no secrets about this. In a perfect world, if we had tons of money, we could have, we could have did block after block in brick.
So, we knew it was in the historical district, we were just going to go ahead, and nobody was going to say anything?
And the historical people at that time all knew about this project, and they knew that we were planning to go forward with sidewalk concrete. And the residents we talked to, and to this point in time, I don't know if any of them are here tonight, but Tim and I have talked to almost all of them, and with the exception of the Belleville Historical Group, with the house that they're involved with now at 804, I think 804 is the house, with the exception of them, and I even went to the St. Clair County Historical Society myself, all of them knew they were going back in sidewalk, and they were just happy to have nice new safe sidewalks, and nobody was upset. And if I dot would have stopped us at that time and said, "You can't do it," we would have had to come back to the drawing board. But the project is an additional $106,000 tonight, it's up to $125,000, but Tim thinks now it looks like it's going to be $106,000.
Did I dot know it was in the historical district?
Yes, absolutely. We didn't hide that. But, you know, in this time of crunch of money, we felt doing, making improvements on safety, you know, in a perfect world, I'd love to put it all back in brick. But we don't live in a perfect world right now. You have a question?
Uh, Mayor, I'm not on the Streets and Graves Committee, but I was curious if this grade is going to be of the style of a false group that's painted and...
No, no, it's not standard. What came back after this project was delayed because we had been reported to the State Historical Society, and the project, as you noticed, got stopped from Mascula Avenue to Forest Avenue. They reviewed it, we went through many conversations back and forth, Tim and I, with various people from I dot and the State Historical, and what was agreed upon was that we would dye, attempt to dye the curb in a limestone color, because we explained to them that getting limestone curb, we found tried, it was almost impossible to get the curb to match. They agreed to that, and they agreed that whatever was in brick would be replaced in brick, which was about a fourth of those two blocks. So, that increase to do what we agreed, what they're demanding, is about $106,000 to $125,000 increase that we didn't have in the project. We are back to you tonight to give permission to complete the project, so we can stay within Hank's timeline and deadline and get this project done. And that's why we're here tonight, and that's the facts.
Question?
Yes.
Is it, would it be normal for the call, Mr. Mayor, to run our plan by the State Historical Society, to debate this?
Well, I'll be honest with you, we thought when the state of Illinois signed off on that, that was already done. After having gone through what North Illinois Street with the I dot project and the federal money, we assumed that all of that was agreed life, and I think it probably was, until some complaints came in to them, and somebody got a hold of the right nerve in Springfield, and everything came to a halt. First, they were screaming about a few of the trees we took out, and then we explained to them, we're going to put back the trees, just like we did on the streetscape, but the trees were buckling the sidewalk, and if you went to fix the sidewalk where it was elevated four to six inches in places, the trees were going to be damaged and had to come out. We're putting back the trees, we're being very environmental friendly, but those trees were, at that time, trees that didn't have great root systems for streetscapes, and they buckled up sidewalks, and they were buckled up, up and down East Washington, if any of you walked that street like I do, most margins.
So... This agency obviously has the power to do that.
Well, they did, and they did, and I dot, whoever at I dot with all the federal money involved, got concerned and stopped the project in the two blocks. So, that's why we're here. But we did not try to go around this, we made it very clear at public meetings, we made it very clear when we talked about budget, once again, that we even talked about going with stamped sidewalks, but that was very expensive. We did it on the streetscape downtown, and, you know, we got three more sections of the coupler that need to be fixed also. This one's the worst, I believe, but we don't have any federal money, there's no grants out there now, folks. We're going to have to, if it were to be for TIP, this money would not get done, this project, and we got to, we got to be present. The rest of the coupler, it's been almost 30 years since it's been done, since 1975. So, it's our entrance way to downtown, and we got to fix the tripping falls. Lot of walking traffic downtown, which is great. Any other questions? Yes, ma'am.
Shouldn't we not have legal papers signed from the Historical Society, State, and local?
We trust I dot, we trust I dot almost.
This is what maybe us two aldermen are trying to say. We don't do things, we always do it on the handshake or word of mouth. Maybe we need to start doing it the proper way.
Well, the proper way is not, there's nothing improper about what we did. We have done this project like we've done every other project, where we're using federal money. We trust I dot, who is who we go through, and they manage it. In the past, when I dot's given you a sign-off, you've had to go ahead, and Jerry's shaking her head because she worked for I dot. This one here, just somebody blew the whistle, and somebody at I dot decided to call us our attention and reel it in and stop it. That normally, when you have I dot's approval, you don't have to go and beg any further, because that's the word, and they stick to their word. We've done nothing any different we have for any other project. We did not mislead, we did not misrepresent, we did not misuse. All we tried to do was get some sidewalks fixed and some street, it's like hamburger down there in the 700 block, and fix some curves that fall apart. Uh, the intent was to do good things. Tim?
Mayor, the project did come in close, and there's still, there's been a thousand and a bunch, so the budget is far less.
Slightly, it's going to be over. But we have to get your approval tonight, and we're not in his mercy to get this thing done. Uh, you know, he's hoping to get within the time, what's his deadline?
Um, middle September.
So, you know, and we don't want to be in conflict now with Hank. We finally got I dot or the State Historical to agree to this, so we're asking tonight to move this forward and get it done. It's not been a great situation, but I can tell you, this has not been our fault. We have been upfront about this, and, yeah, could we have minutes at the public meetings? Yeah, I guarantee you, as long as I'm mayor from now on, they'll be present, because I want to record what all of you say. I want to document it, I want it so I can visually remember it.
Okay, and I would point out that in the January meeting, Streets and Graves, I did bring up the brick issue, and I did bring up our own ordinances.
And it was talked about at that time, that I dot signed off, and that we didn't have, with all these other three quarters of the couplers still go, we did not have large amounts of money.
That doesn't change the ordinance.
Well, then, we... Mrs. Holt, we have a lot of ordinances that aren't up to date, and we need to, we need to get them up to date.
Well, these aren't ordinances from the 1800s, they're from the 1990s.
No, not all of them, not what you're talking about, that's longer than that. And I'm just saying that, yeah, the ordinance book needs punishment. To do it, however, is expensive, and we don't have the time at the moment to staff just to avoid nothing else but going through the ordinance process.
We can't engage for more.
You got a million-dollar park, if you can't put in a little $20,000 or $100,000 sidewalk, put it in right, you know, they know good and all, there's codes in there.
I wish that your passion for this, all of you, would have been present in January when we had this in the budget, once again. We could have worked through this a long time ago. I think for now, okay.
But not to this level, because it was a conversation that went on, and there was... But anyway, we're here for the vote tonight to get this project done. We have a signed agreement with I dot, right, Tim, that's agreed upon, resolution to this. Uh, is there any other questions before we call for the vote? Roll call.
Highsler.
Aye.
Concella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Rudowitz.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
Martinson.
Aye.
Almore.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Harland.
Motion carries, communications, Mr. Turner.
Alderman, second.
Is there a problem with Alderman?
No. Let's do that. A, communication from children who just left the center of Southern Illinois requesting permission to hold their annual walk on Saturday until 22,012, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m., starting and ending in the right building. B, communication from Belleville Lanes Society requesting permission to hold their annual race hole excuse, 5K on Sunday, October 7, 2012, and permission to close Belleville West Parkway from Frank Scott Parkway to Route 15 from 8:45 until 10:15 a.m., and requesting a police officer to close the intersection from 8:45 until 9:45 a.m. They're also asking for 52 barricades and 20 cones from the street department to be delivered on Friday, October 5, and picked up Monday, October 8. C, communication from Linnwood University requesting permission to hold a 5K run walk for the Wolf Stock event on Sunday, September 30, 2012, beginning at 9:30 a.m., starting and ending on the Linnwood campus, and necessary barricades or police assistance to be earned closer to the event, and they are aware that there are charges involved. D, communication from seven restaurants and lounges requesting permission to shut down High Street between East Main and East Washington streets on Sunday, September 16, 2012, from 3:00 until 7:00 p.m., for a bicycle overrun to benefit the proposed golf park in Belleville, and requesting four barricades to be delivered on Friday and picked up on Monday, the party needs signs that they will put in place.
Motion, Alderman and Cybert, second by Alderman Meyer, discussion. Yes, ma'am?
Um, C mentions where there will be charges for overrun, and yet we have some other runs. What, I'm still a little confused about what our policy is.
Mrs. Fields, I think we're talking about all these runs now, Jim?
Yeah.
They're all, they all know.
They all know.
They happen to say it on all the...
They should say.
A lot of them have numerous volunteers, so there's minimal police involvement. Captain Lunk is a fair to say chief, that he and Jim Schneider review it. If they agree that the volunteers these groups have is sufficient to minimal police involvement, but if we have danger situations, and they say there has to be x number of officers, then they're told what they have to take.
Okay, and D only requested one block be shut down. Did you have the route for the rest of the block?
Uh, Brian, is that on your...
Oh, that's a, that's not a, that's not like a race, it's just a pub-to-bog thing. And that block is where they celebrate.
Yeah, that's going to sell, that's going to head up, there are bicycles when it ends up.
Okay, I, I...
This is no...
I got a overrun generally with a different location.
Yeah, they do, if you don't shut the streets...
But what I'm walking down at the disor, like, in any point, does not relate to the...
It's not related to the thing, it's just, it's just, they're no different in any of our poker runs that our restaurants and more have, a lot of Sundays to go to you. They go, and you see a lot of bicycles on the street.
Okay, so they just need a place for everybody to park here.
Right, at the end, it's going to end there. We have a motion and a second to approve these just read communications. Any further discussion? All in favor of approving these communications signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, we made two communications, now we're on to petitions we have done, resolutions I'd ask for a motion to read by title only, Resolution 3110 and 3111. Motion, Alderman and Sillsby, second, Alderman Concella, to read those two resolutions by title only. Uh, you want them individual?
Yes.
Yes, please. All in favor of read by title only signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Resolution number 3110, a resolution transferring the unit to develop block, 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 block. Motion to approve, second.
Motion to approve Resolution 3110, sec, Joe Hayden, second, and Alderman Sillsby. Discussion on that?
Who was first?
Alderman Sillsby made the motion, Alderman Hayden, second, and the motion on 3110. Hearing no discussion, roll call.
Highsler.
Aye.
Concella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Rudowitz.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
Martinson.
Aye.
Almore.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Harland.
Motion carries, communications, Mr. Turner.
Alderman, second.
Is there a problem with Alderman?
No. A, communication from children who just left the center of Southern Illinois requesting
Resolution number thirty-one-ten, a resolution transferring the unit to develop a block, block grant, uh, seven.
Motion to approve, second. Motion to approve Resolution thirty-one-ten, sec, Joe Hayden, second, and Alderman Selsby. Discussion on that?
Who was first?
Alderman Selsby made the motion, Alderman Hayden, second, and the motion on thirty-one-ten. Hearing no discussion, roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Consoa.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Hope.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Rudowitz.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Selsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
Martinson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Arlen.
Motion carries. Motion by Alderman Seibert, second, and two, Alderman Kuk Meyer. Uh, discussion? Yes, sir.
Just reading it here says, shall video gaming be permitted in the city of Bellville, Illinois in liquor licensed establishments, including bars, restaurants, and certain fraternal and veterans organizations? Uh, this is supposed to just board-
Rest of that served, right? Right, Mike? What's your question?
My question is, it says, in liquor licensed establishments? Now, a packaged liquor place is a licensed-
No, liquor licensed establishment is, is defined by the video gaming act, and it includes bars, restaurants, and certain fraternal and veterans organizations. And they must pour on sight, that's called an E. It's usually a term that's defined with video gaming act. Okay. Yes, sir.
Yes, Your Honor, I was gonna say, for, uh, Ms. Lanes, the lit, this is just as good as any point in time. Um, and, and I know you, you can't stop people from, uh, you know, doing certain things, but, uh, I, I support getting this under November ballot as, as quick as possible to get a decision in front of people. Um, I, I'm just gonna state one thing. The business people out there, coming up at, at the mic and, and attacking Alderman and, and, and outburst like that is not helping their cause. And I just wanna state that to you. Attacking the people over here is, is not helping their cause, and, and I don't think it's gonna help in the last two. I, I've tried every which way to, to give as much information on this, uh, and, and work with them, and, and to see that kinda stuff, but, uh, I, I find it very upsetting.
Comments are duly noted. Anyone else before we vote? Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Flynn, would you kinda go over us, with us, the difference between binding and non-binding?
Non-binding would be an advisement referendum that would come back to the council, and you could either accept it or reject it, which you'd have to vote on. With a binding referendum, whatever the vote is, is what's going to be the law.
Okay, and it's a simple majority?
Correct. And, and the only way we can change that is have another referendum. And after what we listened to and all this, to us, it was just from the beginning, once we decided to take it to the voters, you know, it would be more difficult on a few of us if we got in here than after we saw it was, whether it was a close vote or not. We're just gonna trust that with a, with a large turnout, November voting, uh, I think it should give a pretty clear opportunity for both sides of those interested to show up and vote, and, and we'll see what unfolds.
Well, I, I was a little concerned that one of the business owners said, oh, I thought we were doing it for non-binding, so I-
I don't know if that wasn't brought up early, when we talked about it, when I brought it forward and put it on the thing. You know, I, I, I get scrutinized about anything and everything I say and do. And when the question was raised right away, and, and we listened, and we tried to be patient, listening to the business owners and to the concerns, uh, if, if it goes to a vote, and this country is based on a majority vote, if the majority in a, in a busy election like the November election, we all felt as we presented that, that it was a binding, it was a binding situation. And that was the way I presented it from the beginning, was, you know, I, I think the, the, the business owners have to do their homework, uh, and, and educate the public, and continue to, uh, to explain their needs and what's going on, and, uh, and one business owner told me today, he's already getting calls from people in surrounding communities that have passed it, and they wanna know if they'll come look at a business empty building in their area. We're going to see challenges, and, and this is just, people are gonna have to make up their mind as they weigh out these things. That's what elections are about. It's chair, it's choice, and that's what I said in the beginning, it's a choice, to give people a choice. So we're, we're there. The vote now means it'll go on the November sixth election, on the general election, uh, for the big election in November, and it'll be worded like we said. You'll have a yes or no to approve video gaming in the bars, restaurants, fraternal organizations, or veterans organizations where they pour liquor, as the Act defines. Gabby, did you have a question?
That's what I wanted, which you did.
Yeah.
It would be on the November sixth, uh, election, for the presidential election.
Any other questions?
I just wanna clarify that just like the political parties, the members, the bar owners, and people on the other side are free to send flyers or distribute information in any way they choose to educate the public.
I'm sure they will. I think, you've seen a group of them here pretty faithfully for quite a few meetings. I'm, I'm sure that they understand, uh, that their work just began, that they're passionate, and I think it's pretty evident.
But we don't have any ordinances restricting down-
No, no, it's, it's, no, they, they certainly do restrict them. They can certainly do mailers, they can block stuff, they can, they can do a host of things to try to get their information out. Um, I'm sure people who are opposed to it will, some may consider that, but, but I think it is about educating the public on their, on their view, on, on how this can economically help the, the city, and, and how they feel they can do, that's their job to do that.
But, but the, the city's obligation pretty much ends once this vote's done.
Once it's on the ballot, our obligation has ended right now.
As far as, we have other positions.
We agreed to put it on the ballot, and that's what we're raising to do here tonight if I can get a vote. Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Consoa.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Hope.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Rudowitz.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Selsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
Martinson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Arlen.
Motion carries. It'll be on the November ballot. Uh, we go on to, uh, the next item is ordinances. I'd ask for a motion to read by title only. Ordinances number seventy-six thirteen, seventy-six fourteen, seventy-six fifteen, seventy-six sixteen, seventy-six seventeen, seventy-six eighteen, seventy-six nineteen, seventy-six twenty, and seventy-six twenty-one, and seventy-six twenty-two.
So, uh, we have motion and a second to read by title only.
I take it we want all these separately? Are there issues of reading as a group? If there's no, if nobody spoke up, we'll read them as a group and vote that way. All in favor of, of reading the ar, ordinances by title only as a group, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries.
Ordinance number seventy-six thirteen, an ordinance amending chapter fifty-two traffic of revised ordinances of the city of Bellville, Illinois, as amended by amending portions or sections thereof. This creates a fullway stop, same for everything. Uh, ordinance number seventy-six fourteen.
Excuse me, use the microphone, let me hear you.
Can I use my Tim voice?
Yes, use your principal voice.
And, ordinance number seventy-six fourteen, an ordinance amending chapter fifty-two traffic of revised ordinances of the city of Bellville, Illinois, as amended by amending portions of sections thereof. This deletes the U-Right Way intersection at Union and St. Clair. Ordinance number seventy-six fifteen, a zoning ordinance regarding case number forty-two, Barbara Smallingberger, a master's real estate service. Ordinance number seventy-six sixteen, a zoning ordinance regarding case number forty-three, Jerry Royer, Gas Cast Engineering Group. Ordinance number seventy-six seventeen, a zoning ordinance regarding case number forty-five, Nancy Schulte, Local Lucix. Ordinance number seventy-six eighteen, a zoning ordinance regarding case forty-six, Tom and Cherry Hassan. Ordinance number seventy-six nineteen, a zoning ordinance regarding case forty-seven, Greg Crawford. Uh, ordinance number seventy-six twenty, a zoning ordinance regarding case forty-eight, Mark Onstock. Uh, ordinance number seventy-six twenty-one, a zoning ordinance, uh, regarding the number forty-six, Mark Onstock. And ordinance number seventy-six twenty-two, an ordinance amending chapter thirteen, animal control of revised code ordinances of Bellville, Illinois, by adding section thirteen-one-thirteen there to.
Motion to approve. Motion to approve all the ordinances?
Second.
Second to approve all the ordinances. Motion by Alderman Seibert, second by Alderman Seibert. Any discussion?
How are we going to let people know about their change in the dog days for you?
They'll be notified in housing upon any time there's, uh, permits. There'll be an article in our newsletter. There'll be a thing on our website, and I'm sure, uh, if we smile and jack it, there'll probably be something in the, the newspaper at some point. So, I answer that? Yes, ma'am?
Can we put it on the ordinance party thing?
I don't know that, it's pretty lengthy to put, I don't know without the explanation, we can talk about it, but-
That may not-
That's, it might be a little bit of a lot of verbiage to put up there, just, uh, about tethering more than one pad, you know, tether, you know, I don't wanna talk about that, but all these other things, we will get down. We have a motion and a second to approve all these ordinances. Hearing no other questions, roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Consoa.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Hope.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Rudowitz.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Selsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
Martinson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Arlen.
Motion carries. Unfinished business?
Communication on behalf of the Southern Illinois Street Water is requesting permission to close West Main Street from First to Third Streets and First and Second Streets, north and south, on Saturday, September twenty-two, two thousand twelve, for their car show in conjunction with the October fest from eight a.m. until six p.m.
So move. Motion by Martinson, second by Seibert. Any discussion? All in favor of approving this, uh, request, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Any of this ladies can do business.
I have a quick question I'd like, it's actually, I wish I could say this is a prepared statement, it's not. Uh, the comments at the public participations, Your Honor, the direct questions, yard Nazis, commoys, name-calling, I just would like people to, uh, try to remember John Muddings lyrics, give peace a chance. We've talked about this before. Um, it sometimes gets a little bit too comment productive, in my opinion, and I know there was a discussion about having it only if it was on the agenda, uh, to be brought up, and that gets too restrictive to the public. But if we could look at, you know, the possibility of, if you wanna speak on anything on the last two agendas or the current agenda, uh, but having our staff call yard Nazis and things like that, I just think it's just continuing to escalate, and it's, it bothers me too, and I think it's time, it's, it's a danger, it's a fine line to set precedents and to set policy when we wanna hear from the public, but we are all available at any time they can call you or any one sixteen alderman at any time, to have somebody come